Okay, thank you, Dan.
All right, bye bye.
Bye bye.
It's recording, okay. Good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 23rd already. It's already passed a few days of spring and I welcome you to our March meeting. And we'll start by, do I, I assume you've all reread the minutes I sent them into you? And did anybody have any corrections or anything? If not, would someone like to make a motion that the minutes be approved?
Motion.
Okay, Risa made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Gwen, then all those a few approve, raise your hand. Any, no approves? No, okay. And then I will send that this is all set and we'll move forward. Okay, so we're going to start with old business. And the first thing is the Eva is going to talk a little bit on the tree signage on the town hall grounds.
Okay. The subcommittee of Sharon, Daria and I met about a week and a half ago. And we were going to discuss tree labels, what kind of labels we would want, explore some of the potential vendors we would use, kind of get a sense of costs. We also, we also talked about QR codes and what type of brochure we would want for our self-guided tree walk. And Daria and Sharon jump in at any point in time. So first off, we talked, um, yes? Someone say something? No. The first thing we talked about was tree labels. We talked about kind of what kind of materials we might want to use, size of the labels, how many we would need. And we kind of looked at some pricing from two vendors, one out of Rochester, New York and one out of Wichita, Kansas. And we came to the conclusion that we were thinking of going with, and I'm going to see if I can share my screen. We were going to go with two, four by two.
Are you able to?
Oh, good. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yes.
So we decided we were going to go with four by two labels for the signs for the trees. And you can see up on the screen, these are just kind of mockups of four of the different varieties of trees that we have on the property. And we had some other arboretums and we decided that we're just going to go very simple with the labels. We're going to have lead off with the common name of the tree and then have the Latin name below it. And you can see that there's these numbers on these labels. And that's going to be, when we come up with our map, we're going to map out the different varieties of trees. And so people will know tree number one, they'll see it on the map of where it's located. They'll see what type of tree it is and then we'll have some information about it. We, today Sharon and I went over to see her printer and Sharon, the name, oh, it's called the Print Hub out of Windsor to talk about the tree labels and see what she could do for us. Because we wanted to see what, what we could get from a low, you know, our preference would be, if possible, to go with a local vendor, local source. And so she's going to come up with some pricing for us. Just to go, just to cut, am I talking Sharon too much detail? Do you want me to go into this much detail?
Um, no, it's okay, you know. It's okay for now. Sure. Is everybody interested in this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes. Interested, sure.
Because the two vendors that we looked at prior to meeting with her today, one of them offers anodized aluminum labels and the writing would be etched onto them. And those would last for 20 plus years. And then with the other vendor does a little bit differently where they have anodized aluminum, but they have this technology called metal photo where they would actually have the writing on a thin thing on top of the, on top of the aluminum and then have a coating on top of it. That also is known to last for 20 plus years. And then when we went to see the vendor today, we asked her to quote us. She would be able to do like an aluminum, similar aluminum type of label, but it would be printed on the labels. So she's going to quote us for, for how much that would be. And then also she had some kind of PVC material. She's going to give a quote on that. And then also this thing called thermal bond, which is more of a, a really dense kind of plastic. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, what her pricing is, but we'll, that's going to be kind of the next step in the process is to kind of see what the costs are. If you look at the two that we had looked at prior to the local printer, if we decided we needed 25 labels for our trees, one of them was roughly going to be in total $400 and the other one was $200. And it all depends on what type of material we wanted to go with. When we were looking at this project, we were thinking about, you know, who our audience is. And we want to, we want to have it to be simple, easily accessible, not too complicated, not only for the people that would be doing the walking tour, but in terms of maintenance, of maintenance of the future. And so initially, I think the thought was we were going to have QR codes on each of the labels. And the person on the walking tour would go up to each label. If they go up to the Ginkgo tree, they'd scan the code and then they'd be taken to something that gives us, gives them information about the tree. As we explored QR codes and the size of QR codes, what it takes to maintain them, we decided that instead of having a QR code on each of the labels, we're going to have a kind of a panel display at the beginning of the walking tour, and I'll get into that a little bit later, that's going to have one QR code. And at that panel, at the beginning of the tour, we also have a little box where we'll have our pamphlet, which will have a map of the tour as well. So the person, if they're deciding they want to do this walking tour, they could either scan the bar, scan the QR code at the beginning, be taken to something that's going to walk them through with a map and information about the trees, or they can take a pamphlet, which will provide them with the same information. Part of the thinking about not having the QR code on the tree was that as you're walking along, if you have these QR codes on 25 trees, each, the person's going to have to go to each tree, kind of bend over to walk over things. It's very more inconvenient to have to scan every tree to get information about it. So that's why we came to the conclusion that it'd be easiest just to have one QR code at the beginning. I was going to try to show you what we were thinking of in terms of the, here. What we'd want to have at the beginning of our walk, let me just show you something here. Okay, here we go. Can people see this?
No, you have to share it again.
I do.
There's up at the top, there's pause and reshare, a new share.
Oh, new share. Gotcha. All right. So you can see here, this is just a sample of, this is this one company. Can you guys see this Lark label one?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just one, one of the companies that we had looked at. This is, this is the one out of Wichita, Kansas. So we're kind of thinking of having something along these lines. And we're kind of thinking of something that's a 24 by 18, which is pretty significant. Ideally, we're going to want it on maybe some kind of wooden post. But at the, yeah, we would, we're far from what, designing what we're going to have on it. But the idea is to have a little bit map of the trees, have just kind of maybe the names of the trees, something about, just in general about trees. We're going to work all that out. But the idea was on this panel at the beginning of a walk, you'd have the QR code, which will allow people to have access on their phones to the map and information. And we asked Nancy at today to also quote us on how much she thinks a panel of this sort would cost as well. The other thing we talked about was we're going to have a, we're thinking about having a three, a tri-fold brochure that's going to be available at the beginning of the walk, right near this, this signage. And I have to do a new share here.
Yeah, or you can go up and go share over that one. You can continue to share. That's good. You've got the.
Mine's working. All right, hold on here. I don't know why I can't do this. Okay, can you guys see that? New share?
Yes. You're doing the trees at Bloomfield Town Hall?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is a very preliminary mockup. But the, over on the right, that would be the first kind of tri-fold. That would be the front of it. We'd have some information on there. Then on the, when you'd open it up, you would have something like to the left here, we would have illustrations of the leaves of the different trees. And we have, we have 15 species right now. And you can see that they're, they're numbered and those would obviously correspond to the numbers on the tree labels. And then here's just, to the right is the map and we'll have that numbered. So people will know where the different trees are located.
Wow.
And we asked Nancy to quote us on that. And we'll see what she, so, so that's where we ended up. We ended up that we want to keep the labels fairly small, very simple, not have QR codes on the labels, have this initial panel display and go with a brochure. It just seemed as if it was the simplest, the simplest way to go, the easiest to me, obviously the easiest to maintain. Also, make it very accessible and easy and not overly complicated. The idea behind this is to kind of get people to appreciate the trees we have in town, appreciate trees in general. And we didn't want to overly complicate it. We need to work out with a QR code, how, what, how, where are we going to direct the user to, are they, we going to direct them to some kind of town website? Are we going to have our own website so that we could fill that with the information about the trees? We have a lot of details to work out. That's kind of the, the overview.
Okay, I just want to add one other thing that the brochure that, can you go back to that little brochure you were working on? Okay, so this is a fold. It folds, it's eight and a half by 11 folds in two times. And we're looking at, we're trying to get the cost and what it would be to get a waterproof lucite holder, which would may go under the sign or to the side of the sign. So someone could conceivably take out a folder and walk around with that also. Where it would have the numbers and they could look up at the tree and look back at their brochure. And some of these brochures would go into the town hall on the book racks, you know, they have in the corridor right as you walk in. That was one of the other things that Eva came up with, which was a good way to disperse all this information. And the end goal is, originally, our end goal was to have this featured at the September 25th hike that would be the guided walk that would run from town hall all the way down to Philly Park. But we're having some second thoughts and maybe it would be nice to have this as its own. Because I think we'll be complete, this will be completed maybe by, what do you think, June or July? And we could have, you know, some kind of special announcement for it or coordinate it with another activity that might be happening in town at the same time. So that if you had a group coming into the center of Bloomfield for something, they could come over and take the walk too.
Sharon, she sent us some information, emailed us about the loose, about the box to enclose, have, where we're going to, where you would store the brochures. And it looks like they're like $15 to $20. So they're not.
One box, that's fine.
Yeah.
Need, okay.
Um, you know, I had talked about a month ago to some of the folks at the Suffield Garden Club and they're working on a tree inventory project, which is, you know, very large in scope. And, you know, their idea is to get to some things, is to have something where people can also walk down the main street in Suffield, know what tree they're next to and get information on it. And you know, one thing that she was stressing is as they were getting into this tree inventory project, it became more detailed and more that they were kind of losing sight of what they wanted to achieve in terms of having this walking tour. And she was just saying that, you know, they want to kind of go back and go to make it just simpler. They're like, you know, the people that are going to be walking around, taking a look at the trees, aren't going to, in general, be like people that are extremely knowledgeable on trees.
Right.
People that you kind of want to expose things to. So you want to just kind of have some interesting facts about each tree, a fun fact, just to keep it, to engage people. You're not intended to be the full, you don't want to have too much detailed information. Because if they want more detailed information about where it should be planted, you know, what kind of soil, all that, they can, they can get that information. This was just kind of intended to like, give exposure to people, to just to look around to see what kind of trees they have in town.
Okay, I think that's, that's our plan. Does anybody have any questions? Any input or anything they want to say?
Just a comment. Now, I love, I love it all. I think it's great. The problem is five, three years from now, who's going to be in charge of refilling the brochures? And is there a way that we could create something like this that's permanent? Somewhere like inside the town hall or somewhere where this kind of, this was on a sign? So if, you know, we don't have the people that follow us and want to do the brochures, we still have the signs. Is there something that could be more permanent somewhere? So if the brochures go by the wayside, there's still some kind of code, you know what I'm saying? A sign on a.
Yeah, then that's why we decided to go with the one QR code. Because if you have a QR code on every tree label, you, someone has to maintain the information that that links to. And it gets very cumbersome. So that's why we decided to go with this one QR code at the beginning of the walk. And that information, you can, there's only one place you have to go and you modify that information on that website or that PDF or whatever it is. And when you ask about what's, who's going to maintain it, that's why we're like, we're a volunteer group. We can't, we're not going to expect anybody to maintain it other than us. That's why we wanted to keep it as simple as possible. Um, for the time being, I don't think we envision, other than Sharon has maybe a potential catsura she has that might be planted. And, you know, we won't up, we won't finalize this until we know. You know, do you expect Sharon any big tree plantings to be going on? But it would be, in the answer to you, Lucy, you know, it'd be, at least for the time being, the expectation that we would be maintaining it.
Yes, the, the Bloomfield Beautification Committee has been in existence since 19, I believe, 85. And so it would be ongoing. We keep records, but I think that's a good point, you know, what happens in the future. So we definitely would have some sort of record, Lucy. And I think it would be good for us to turn a copy over to the town manager and, and say, you know, here's what we put together. If at some time, you know, we aren't able to continue this, you will have records of it. Does that, what do you think, Lucy? Lucy here? Lucy? Did we lose her?
No.
There you go. Okay. Well, I think we might have answered a question. If Lucy may have gone offline. I was having some trouble with my computer today being offline. Maybe she had an issue. But does that, that make sense, don't you think, the rest of the group? You have any input towards that? No?
Is there any way maybe to, can it be linked? So if someone wanted to print it on their own or something?
Yeah, that's the idea is I think one thing we're, we're going to explore is developing our own website and not relying on the town hall's website, because it's just, you know.
We don't know. We're thinking of.
Yeah, that's just something we're.
Try to work with.
Okay.
Because it would be nice to just have ownership of it, that we could modify things easily and control it, instead of relying on a town hall employee who might have other priorities. So, I'm sorry, I forget now, what your question was.
My question was if we gave them a link, a link.
Oh, yeah. So that's the idea is so if we had our own web, if we had our own website potentially, we, that would be the idea is that when they click on that initial QR code, it's going to take them to this website and there they'd be able to, you know, download an information sheet about each tree.
Okay.
So that's kind of the idea if they want, we're going to have like the, a little bit of the summarized description of it. But if they wanted more details, we could link them to something else. So I think, you know, we need to kind of work out all the details behind that. But I think the, the initial face of it would be just simple description, some information. But if they wanted deeper, we could link them to something else. So we need to work all that out, but.
No, but I was thinking the brochure is a cost savings. Maybe someone, you know, we have all these brochures. Suppose we're out of brochures, if we gave them a link to that brochure, they could print it on their own.
They could do that as, yeah, we could do that. We can have a, you know, PDF of this just as, as, as well, exactly. So those are all the detailed things that we need to kind of figure out.
No, it is a lot of work.
But I think, you know, I think we just initially needed to get, you know, a handle on what we wanted these tree labels to be, how many trees we had, kind of threesome landing on these QR codes, what we wanted to do. And I think we've kind of, you know, hashed that thing out. So I think now we're kind of ready to kind of get into the details and actually, you know, see how this is going to work.
Sounds, I like it. I mean, that's, yeah, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of.
Yeah.
Maintenance.
Yes. Well, no, there's not a lot of maintenance of it once it's done.
Once it's done, yeah.
Yes, so that's the beauty of it. I think Eva's worked out those details that, once it's put up. I mean, yes, down the road in 10 or 20 years, if the trees have changed or something, there will be a little maintenance that you have to have special screws when you put the four by two labels on the trees. Because as the trees grow, they, one minute. Lucy and lost the Zoom connection. All right, hold on a minute. So Lucy and Risa, look, did you, I just lost you. Can you, can you hear me? Do you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, because it shows me that I've lost, I've launched the meeting here. So, so the screws, anyway, you have to loosen the screws every couple of, maybe once a year or so, so that the tree won't grow over the screws. So they do require special screws. So that's really, it appears to be most of your maintenance. And once they're done, it's not like something you have to go all the time and be, you know, dusting off or any of those things. And the, and the labels probably would be at eye level. We'd have to, that would be a decision, you know, we could all talk about. Because my eye level is different than Gwen's eye level. That's something that will be worked out. Okay. If there are no further questions, I'm going to move on to Lucy. And I don't know if Lucy is back on and actually I don't have a picture anymore. So hold on a minute, I'm trying to figure out where everybody went. You guys don't see me, right?
I see you, but I still see Eva's screen.
Oh, I'll stop sharing.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so, hold on a minute, I gotta get back on, I gotta find that screen because I'm not seeing it.
Looks like we lost Risa too.
Yes, we lost Risa and that's why I'm trying to get back on. So I'm going to try this aloud. If I, if I lose you guys.
Yeah. They lost their Zoom and aren't they neighbors? So I have a feeling maybe it's their area.
But I've lost, when she said that, I lost my picture, so.
Okay. Because Risa just chatted too. She just chatted me.
Tell them they should come in on the phone. Hold on. This is really awkward. So you hear me still?
I can hear you.
Okay, so if you can hear me.
I was texting with Risa because she sent me the text.
Okay. All right, there I am again. Okay, so tell them they should come back on and I'll admit.
Okay.
All right, because the next topic is Lucy's topic and I'm going to skip that for a minute while you're trying to get her back on. So the next topic is the notable landscape, subcommittee report. And the notable landscape is Eva, but I don't think at this point we really, next month would be really to talk about it.
Yeah, we don't have, we're, we're getting, we're going to meet up in a week or so to discuss all the pre-launch stuff that we're going to be working on over the next month or so. So nothing really to update. Next month will be more.
Risa's actually tried a few times.
Oh, here, I've got somebody in. I just, I just admitted Lucy. Tell, tell Risa to try again that Lucy just came on. Lucy, you're back. We saved your talk, Lucy. So Lucy's going to talk about the Mother's Day Guided ID Walk, which is going to be May 8th, which is on a Saturday, which is going to be from 10 to noon. Okay, take it away, Lucy. You're on mute, Lucy.
Sorry, we, we, Risa and I lost power. So I don't know.
Back in, she just.
But we're back in, good. So I just, a question was in the minutes, from the last minutes, it said 10:30 to 12. Is it 10:30 or is it, is it 10?
I think it's, I thought it was 10 to 12, but I'll check. Oh, you know, hold on, I actually.
I don't know. I don't, I don't think.
It's 10 to 12.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. I've had some discussions with Libby Moreau about the history of the area. And she doesn't really, you know, other than she lived there and raised her children in that area and they played a lot there. She doesn't really have much to say, other than it was the Fuller Brush Company, Fullers, not the Fullers of Suffield that I know anyway, that lived there. So that was wonderful. I still haven't hooked up with Zaline, but she is very interested in giving me some ideas of birds that would frequent there and what we might see. So, you know, that, that will be good information. Daria has been wonderful to already walk the area and sort of give me a list of trees that are of interest. Now I just have to identify them myself with her help. Hopefully, you know, we can maybe walk together and say, this is a good place to stop and talk about this, this particular tree.
To say, in what way, a good particular tree? That it's a host for different insects and birds or?
You know, I mean, probably those or anything that you think, what would you be interested in hearing about? You know, so if there's, there's a particular, you know, something of interest, you know, in a particular area, you're walking along and you stop and say, oh, that's great. I mean, like the woodpecker tree, as I call it. You know, that's, that's right in the middle of the, of the property and it's covered in bittersweet and there are holes. And many people don't know that woodpeckers make those holes. You know, they, they, you know, that's, that's an interesting thing and that kind of biodiversity. Or is there a particular fruiting tree that it's not just beneficial because it's beautiful and, you know, carbon dioxide and all that kind of stuff? But it tends to host this particular bird or this, you know? And maybe we could talk a little bit about the different diseases that have been and brought up and are ravaging, you know, some of our forests that we need to be aware of. Because we can talk about not transporting firewood and, you know, I mean, the importance of little things that you take for granted. You know, it's just raising awareness, not only of the trees that are there, but how we treat different areas. You know, when we say just, you know, don't take things, you know, what is it? Whatever you bring in, take out. So it's not just littering, it's more, you know, how do you use this space and, and use it wisely? And what the, you know, for every action, there is a reaction. So, you know, if you cut down a tree, then this is what you're doing. If, you know, you, you know, for whatever, I mean, like the woolly algae came up on, in a hurricane. So, I mean, we can't really control that, but there are other things that have been introduced, you know, like invasives. I mean, a lot of people don't realize that along the river, there are some really. there are some really bad invasives that we're, we're constantly battling with. And so it'd be nice to point that out. And that's why we ask people to wash the bottoms of their boats. You know, and, and before they go in from river to river and the same being, you know, just because you don't want leaves in your yard, um, there are other ways around it than cutting down the tree. You know, let's, let's, let's figure it out. So that's sort of the goal of the watch is to sort of, you know, so trees, birds, water, you know, let's use our spaces wisely. Will be the topic of, of the guided walk. So Daria, to your point, you know, if, if you're walking along and you as tree expert stop and say, oh, that's, that's really interesting to me, then I'm sure it would be really interesting to someone else as well.
Good. That sounds really good. I really like that. One good thing we have is the town out, the leisure services. We have a link that people can sign up and register. So that will be going out to, so people will know. I'll send that to all of you. If you have any friends or anyone you want to invite, they have to register. Cause we, um, did you set a limit on how many you felt that you could handle?
Well, it will depend. I, I think, you know, again, in terms of, I have the lavaliers, which we discussed, which are the headphones with, with a speaker. So which, anybody is welcome to borrow from me if they're doing a walk. I'm more than happy to share the, share them. So, so that's, that's really easy and, and very easy to use, which I think would be good. So, you know, in terms of a number, depending on how many people we have there, I mean, I wouldn't like to see more than 30 people. I mean, I think that's a large group. You know, just to manage down the trails, but you know, that would be max. I mean, ultimately I think 20 people would be great. You know, I think that would be manageable. No dogs. I hate to say, I love my dog, but I think, you know, I don't want to be fighting with Fido and, and Fluffy who aren't getting along while I'm trying to talk or, you know, while we're trying to walk and there might be people who are sensitive to dogs or, you know.
Yes. No, that's good to know. We'll put that in the, right up in the copy.
And, um, you know, I think age, age limit is, is open. I'd love to have families there. So I, you know, I, you know, that, that, that is great, but, and I have a dog. So I am a huge dog lover and I appreciate everybody else's dogs. I just think on something like this, it's just really.
It'll be distracting.
A good idea not to, not, and people, you know, not everybody loves dogs.
Yes.
And, and so.
This is fine. It, you know, it depends on where you are. Cause this is like the hike that we're doing that goes to Hawk Hill, they are going to allow dogs, but it's a much broader, open space where this is more confined. You're on a narrow trail. You don't want some dog pulling to go in front of another person. So I, I think it's okay, you know, when you set the rules up to begin with and people understand.
Yeah.
So that's perfectly okay. And.
I was thinking of, I, sorry, is, is maybe doing a little handout to everybody who participates. I think Sharon and I had talked about this is getting, because it's Mother's Day, you know, doing a little flyer, which I'm happy to create with Sharon's graphics and print it at Dun, at Duncaster and then, um, a packet of seeds. You know, a nice little packet of seeds with, that's stapled to this little flyer that tells all about Trees for Bloomfield and the BBC and all the great things that we're doing front and back. And so we hand that to them either at the end or the beginning of the, of the hike. You know, I just think that's a nice little way to get some PR out there and a nice little Mother's Day present. You know, it's easy and cheap. I mean, we can get a ocean.
Do you have a suggestion, what kind of packet of seeds you were thinking?
Well, you know, wild, I'd love to have something that's native and not, you know, or wild, wildflowers, not, you know, something that, or even simple like marigold, something that will easily, you know.
Now, marigolds I wouldn't do because that's not wild. I like their color.
No, but I like the idea of wild, you know, that they take this and throw them out, you know what I mean? On their walk, they could throw them out around someplace.
Yes. There are, I forget, in England, there are these people, I forget what they're called, something bombers, but they, they will go to open, like neighborhoods where, um, maybe there's blight or something and they throw these wildflower seeds down and the plants come up, yeah, and they create these.
I do that on Rockwell Avenue. Very upset about that space.
No, we're planting on Rockwell Avenue. We're putting trees.
Right behind those pickleball fields. It's like a war zone. I'm like.
Well, we'll have to check that out. I'm not familiar with that. So, um, but no, this sounds great. Um, I hope that everybody will, uh, you know, let people know about this. It's on Saturday, the day before Mother's Day. And now will Daria and Zaline be joining you?
Um, I don't know, but I will definitely set up a time with.
So, you know, Daria.
I'll definitely set up a time with you, Lucy, to, uh, go through, um, and go, uh, walk the trail with you.
Good. And I have a group of, of, of women that I've been adventuring with for 26 years and all of them have already signed up.
Really? Okay.
I don't know if 26 was a lot, but, um, you know, I have a bunch of them. So if, if everybody else can't, they're, they're experienced hikers and, and they can help me out. So.
All right. Okay. Yeah. And, and I think Zaline, you know, she probably will want to go.
Yeah, which would be great. I mean, I'd love to be able to turn to her and say, and now here's Zaline with the bird.
Okay. That sounds really good. And, um, now, uh, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, the volunteer list. Uh, Gwen and Henriette, I sent you lists. You got lists from Eva. And now you're wondering, well, what am I supposed to do with these lists? Now they've given me all this. So the idea behind these lists were that I was hoping that you would put together a volunteer list for this and a sort of, um, a look, uh, email list that you might call to split up the list and make phone calls to these people. And just say, you know, we're happy that you were a notable landscape winner. You know, we really loved your garden and we hope that you'll keep, you know, continue to have some interest in our, in our program. And could we put you on our volunteer list to call on you maybe once during the season? There's no commitment and, but we, you know, if you'd like to be interested, could we put you on our list? And at the same time, we have lots of really great events happening. Can we send you information about them? And, and you know, we're not saying you gotta come, but at least if we put that information out to them, they are the gardeners who you know, love gardening. We have a lot of interesting things coming. And there's a good possibility that you will get some of them to respond and say yes. And that will be hopefully for us to begin to build a volunteer database up for the plantings that we, you know, will be doing. Or even if it's a little bit of a maintenance thing. And the reason I'm saying start with a phone call, I think it's more personal. You know, you make that contact. There's something.
That's, that's. Yeah. Well, that's what we said last month that we were going to do. And Eva had originally sent us, sent us the 2020 winners, which most of them have phone numbers, which is great. The 2019 list that you sent us has no phone numbers. So we're going to have to do some research to get, you know, we'll have to get their phone numbers first, but.
That can tell you how to get their phone numbers. Risa?
Yes, I can. And I, if you give me the list, I'll look them up.
Oh, awesome. Okay.
I thought we did this once, Risa. I couldn't find it, but I'll look again.
We did it, but I don't think we did it for this. We did it for something else. We did it for Landscape Awards.
Yeah, that's what this list is right now.
Oh, okay. I thought this was for volunteering.
Yeah, but the names come from the notable.
Oh, yes. So yes, we did do this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll look. I, I thought we did and I was going through all my.
No, I can do it again.
Okay. All right. She's really good at that.
I think I went through the town, you know, the town registry, whatever, that you told me about.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's important that we get email addresses.
Yes, that's very.
Once you, you know, once, and, and I think even with these initial phone calls that we're going to make, if Sharon, Sharon, you could give us, you don't have to do it now, but you know, like we usually plant before Memorial Day, like if you could just give us, you know, roundabout dates, so we don't just say, you know, so we have some information to give.
Okay. Okay. And I like that you want to get their emails because it makes, the initial is to make contact with them verbally. But once you have their email, it's more convenient for us. You know, we say, we'll just drop a message, everybody will get it and you can respond to it. And we'll let you know when we're having events and that they can.
Yep.
Okay. Good. All right. I'll, I'll make sure you have that. I'll, I'll put that on. Pretty much, usually we do it the last weekend before, they have, and I assume they will do it this year. I haven't spoken to Dave Malesko, but the Memorial Day Parade and honoring of the Memorial Day soldiers is usually done that Memorial Day weekend. And we always try to plant just before that. So it could be the last weekend in May or it could be the week before. And I will look at the schedule and see, and we have to do that weather permitting. But, um, uh, we are, we have ordered our plants from a different vendor this year. So I'm hoping that, you know, I asked for them to be ready, but like the second weekend, the third week in May. And, uh, happy to report to you that our hanging baskets are looking pretty good.
All them today, it's incredible how well they're doing.
Well, that's good because I love those geraniums.
Yeah. So we saved them from last year. We're recycling them, uh, been feeding them, made cuttings so we can add to them. So it's good.
Sharon, could I just add to that since?
Yes.
I had, um, uh, I have some kind of bad news that got rectified. Um, I went to the Little Free Library at the Town Hall and, um, there were no books there. Somebody cleaned it out. And, um, so I was pretty dismayed about that. Um, and talked to some people on the Little Free Library Committee and also, um, did a couple of posts on Facebook and, um, lots of people volunteered to bring books. One person came yesterday, I, I had actually, when I got there, I had some books in my cars. I was into some books in there and somebody came, um, I think yesterday and, and filled it up. And I have other people that volunteered to bring books as well. So the response was great. It was really annoying that that happened. People drive around, there was a big thing in West Hartford a few years ago where somebody was driving around emptying out all the libraries there and driving down to the book barn in Niantic and selling them. Um, so I'm going to get a stamp for all and, and keep the books, um, that are in there stamped with, you know, not for resale, Bloomfield, um, Little Free Libraries or something like that. So, that was my, um, news.
So could you also suggest people that are leaving donations just to write that in the cover of the book? So as they leave it in there, could they write not for sale Bloomfield Free Library? I mean, just a suggestion then.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I'm, I'm just going to buy a stamp and I go there every few days anyway because I'm the steward of it. So I'll just stamp them, I think.
But are you going to be able to do all of them? Cause there's one, I have some books here. I was going to drop at the one up at church, you know.
I'm only going to do, I'm only going to do the one at Town Hall.
Okay.
Because that's the one where books were stolen. So, and that's the one that I take care of. So all the other ones have their own stewards.
Okay.
So. Do you know, do you know, do they have cameras at the Town Hall?
No.
I, I, I don't know.
No, they don't. They don't have, they don't have cameras at the Town Hall. They don't have cameras at the police station. No.
Wow.
I don't think they do.
But to know crowds, yeah, why don't they?
Well, you know, I, I don't know. That's not our thing to think about. I'm going to have to pass on that one because we're just going to have to, I think it, it shows the generosity of our fellow human beings when they step up. If it would be nice if you could get, um, their names and email addresses. Again, another source of a contact either for your library and also for the BBC to thank them or the, you know, for the Little Free.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have done that, um, thanking them on Facebook. It was, they're all comments on Facebook. So I have those and I thanked each one of them for, you know, stepping up.
But through Facebook.
Yeah. Yes.
Not, not verbal, I mean, not written or anything. So do you have anything in writing anywhere?
For what? To thank?
For a, for a volunteer list, for a list to reach out to, say you needed books again. Do you have those emails?
Well, I can create a list from.
I'm just saying that might be a good idea because, you know, Facebook disappears after a while and you can't find the same, um, post again. That might be of help to you.
Yep.
But it's the, the Facebook page that she used was the one, it's a Bloomfield. I forgot which.
I know, but the posts change all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, a year from now, if she's looking and said, I need a lot of books, where am I going to get them?
Oh, okay.
You would have a source. I'm just saying that's a suggestion. Well, that good, that has a good ending. Well, okay. Well, let's, uh, move on to, um, new bit, oh, let's see. Oh, I did want to say one other thing. So Michael Riley, I don't know if any of you know him. A few of you met him, Michael, when we planted bulbs at the Town Hall. And he's also a yoga teacher. And I have been talking to him about when we do the plantings at, um, Rockwell Avenue, sort of, uh, all of us coming together because we're going to have a demonstration for all the volunteers to see how to plant the trees. Because these are sizable trees and there are methods to it that we want everyone to follow. But, um, we were thinking of having him do sort of a, I don't know what you would call it. It's not, maybe an incantation or it's sort of a blessing, a sort of thing. But it's, it's a, a way of thanking, you know, being grateful for the earth that we're about to put these trees in and, and, um, and what we're doing and how significant it is to the environment and sort of like something to start it off. So what do you think of that, uh, of doing something like that? It's, and it's only like a five minute thing. It's nothing long. It's not religious. It's more reaching out to Mother Nature and, and being.
Right. It's amazing. He is not only an amazing, but he's also a wonderful meditate, meditation leader. He's, he's really an amazing human being. So I would recommend it. I think it'd be great.
I too. I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Well, when I was talking to him, are any of you familiar with forest bathing? It's not like forest gum, but it's forest bathing. So Lucy, would you like to tell them what forest bathing is?
Forest bathing is the practice of walking in the woods and it's, it's meditative. And they've proven scientifically that there is great physical and benefit. Um, there, there, I don't know if it's pheromones. I don't know what it is that the trees give off that actually have great benefit to people walking in the woods. And so it's a, a practice in Japan and in many countries where that's, it's actually described. I mean, and I was just listening to something today. My son is living, my oldest son lives in Japan. And he was telling me about a national holiday that they, they have, which is called Hanami, which means flower watching. So right now at this time, the flowers are beginning to bloom. And so it's a national holiday where everybody has the day off and they get a picnic and they go to their favorite park or their favorite place in nature. And they spend the whole day there and they take copious amounts of pictures and they send their pictures in and they keep them and that's their Hanami celebration. So forest walking is sort of the same thing, but you do it on a, on a daily basis. And it's a way to recharge naturally with no drugs, no nothing. You just go out in the woods and find a nice path and, and walk down and enjoy it. And so I'll get the actual scientific, which I think would be fun to share too. And again, something on our walk about this, you know, the actual physical, uh, chemical benefit that you get, uh, by walking in the woods.
Okay. Well, I was talking to him and I've also been talking to my daughter Kelly about us possibly, if, if maybe we could do it this year, if not, we could do it next year, of having a forest bathing experience, you know, of, of calling it that and inviting people to participate. And maybe it's in the fall when the leaves begin to turn and we go back to, to the, uh, River Park again. It, it's just something I want to throw out there. You can go look it up online, Google it, forest bathing. There's some nice Youtubes on it. And, you know, it was kind of one of those things where people are saying, oh, this is kind of funky, you know, who does this? But it really, it's very, it is very helpful. And for many people who've come through this year being very stressed out, this has been a way of calming them and appreciating. this has been a way of calming them and appreciating what we have surrounding us. And we're very fortunate to live in a very sort of rural area. So I just wanted to throw that out because, um, Michael, like Lucy said, he's really phenomenal. He, he has a, a, you know, he has a presence and I wanted to, he called me and he wants to be included in participating. He's volunteered to help plant the trees. And he's doing a dissertation, I think, and he wants to do it on connecting with the, uh, BBC and some of the things we do. So I just wanted to alert you to that and I hope that you will agree, uh, that this is something we could bring him into.
Who is, uh, who's giving a demonstration on tree planting?
Um, that would be John Keigho. He would be the one leading it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So, and he's, uh, John's gonna bring in a, a Kubota. And the concept behind the plantings are, we're only gonna do the initial holes because we don't want to compact the earth very much around where the trees are being planted. So i- he feels that if he digs the initial part, we should be able to come in and, you know, people can dig the soil out, the rest of it. You know, so we're, we're working out those details and his brother is going to be helping him. And we're, and we're, I'm looking for volunteers for that. Uh, John Capadonna has volunteered, Lucy has, David Mann has.
Um, but I also was wondering, and I'm just asking this question. I was thinking of possibly putting together a group of, I'm gonna ask the residents if they'd like to participate and maybe put a team together or is that not?
Can they, as, as long as you feel that they can dig, because this is, this is work. This is.
Okay.
There are, but, but having said that, there are some 15 gallon trees that, you know, there are, they're in a 15 gallon container. That could be the crew that goes over and does that, you know?
I have, I have one or two that I have in mind that are very active with Kevin Wilcox, who's our groundskeeper right now at, at Dunkster. And they love that. So I thought it would be fun maybe to see if they would want to be involved in that.
I mean, I need all the merrier, I mean.
Okay.
Sharon, all the trees are con- uh, container grown, uh, there's no bald and burlap?
No, they're all bald and burlap except for the, uh, five, uh, maples, red sunset that go on Park Avenue. We didn't have the autumn, remember, we couldn't get the oaks. So the, there's just the ones that are planted, um, parallel to Park Avenue. They're the ones in the container. I believe everything else is in a B and B.
And which ones for, for Rockwell?
All the ones in Rockwell are B and B because we were gonna do fi- a 15 gallon, but they didn't have them. So we had, remember, we had to move up to the bigger size.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Wait, so who's moving the B and B?
The B and Bs are being, are being brought over by, um, from the nursery. They're being taken off the truck with a spider. A spider is a truck that lifts the plants off of the truck, puts them on the ground and, and, um, Ron is in charge of that. And he's, we're gonna use the Kubota that will set them all next to their holes. That will all be set up ahead of time.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've been talking about how, and then we're going a few days, we're going like 10 days ahead of time to call before you dig because we have to go and put markers where all the trees are being dug and the call before you dig comes out and marks it to make sure there are no underground, uh, gas lines, no, no, no wires that we're going to disturb. So that, that's already been spoken about. So, uh, but, and we'll talk about that more at the next one because that's not till April 30th. Um, so there are a report from Dan. Dan's not here, as you know, he's making his budget presentation today. And, um, the next one is the town planters. So we have to clean out and plant pansies at the planters. We have five at the human services and we have three at the library and one at the, a branch library and two at the police station. So today, Eva and I did the, uh, senior services and human resources. We did that one today. That's all done. So I'm looking for some volunteers to help with the, uh, library. And the.
Prosser Library.
Okay. So you're gonna help with Prosser Library. All right, period. So I can.
I can volunteer where you need share.
Okay, so.
Can we do, can we do anything on Thursday, Sharon?
Yeah.
Three or four nights?
Right. So, uh, well, let me finish because there, we have these different things coming up. So that, so today is Tuesday. We have Wednesday and Thursday and Friday. I think it's supposed to rain on Friday. Is that what you said, Eva? Is it raining on Friday? Can you just look that up?
That was the last thing I saw. Let me check again.
So Thursday, Philly, here's one, Daria, that you really would be appreciated at is at Philly Park. I volunteered to help them prune the roses. So, um, I volunteered and I sent a note out to everybody if you guys would help. Well, you know, I helped them last year and they were so grateful for it. And they called me up and they said, would you help us this year? So they've gotten, I think, uh, two, I think they have three people or four people who they said could come. And Gwen and Risa volunteered. And if you're interested, Daria, that would be great. And what we need to do is cut those roses down by like a third. Because they've just gotten so big through the years. And we didn't prune them last year till, it was so late that we couldn't do as much because they'd already had buds and everything on them by the time they decided they should be cut.
When are you doing that again?
That is on Thursday, the twenty, uh, twenty fifth, is that a Thursday? The twenty fifth, yes. And it's at 11 o'clock. So we're starting at 11 and all we have to, we, we prune, we bring our loppers and our pruners. I've already arranged with, uh, the debris to be picked up by public work. So we just leave it on a tarp. And that, and that's all basically what we're doing. We're not, we're not doing any other maintenance or anything. We're just making sure all the roses have been, um, pruned properly for the, for the season.
Well, I, I have an appointment. I have to take my mother to physical therapy at 11. So just drop her off and then I could only be there for, you know, like a, an hour. But yes, I can.
Okay. That would be good.
The weather report for, for Friday is steady rain in the morning, showers continuing in the afternoon.
And brought to you by our weather lady, Eva. Okay.
Not a meteorologist, just a weather lady.
Okay. And does, uh, so Thursday's a good day, right? How about Wednesday? Is that a good day too?
Wednesday is just gonna be cloudy.
Okay.
High of 61, low of 48.
Okay, so.
I'm happy to admit that my daughter is in labor right now. Grandchild. So I will not be here from now and from tomorrow through the weekend. So I unfortunately can't.
No, thank you. But I know you notified me before and, and I, as I said before, there'll be plenty of other times to prune. Um, so Gwen and, and Risa will be joining me on, uh, Thursday, right?
Yes.
And I know Henrietta had something. And on Wednesday, Daria, you want to come and help plant the library, right?
Oh, that's Wednesday? Do you mean tomorrow?
That would be tomorrow. Yes. If, I mean, this can be done next week too. It's, uh, I mean, the, the pansies are here. Eva and I did them. It doesn't take long to do it. Um, but we can do it next week or we could do it on the weekend if that's easy.
How about Saturday? Since it's gonna rain on Friday, it might be easier to plant on Saturday, wouldn't it?
You can do it any days. The soil was great today, you know, either way, if you get them planted beforehand, then they get rained on afterwards. It doesn't really matter.
And where do I get the pansies? Because I could do them at.
No, uh, no, we have a plan. We, we, we had this whole thing set up. So I give out the plant. I have all the plans. I have all the plants. They're all, the plants are already procured. All you gotta do is come, we put them in.
Well, where do I get them? At your house or you bring them to the Prosser, uh, to Prosser?
I bring them to the library. We have them at the library and we have, um, black pussy willows that go in the center and corkscrew, um,
Willow.
Corkscrew willow. That are the center pieces of them. So they're all violas, yellow and blue.
Okay.
And they're planted with parsley, also with parsley.
Uh, so I think I, I'm not free the rest of the week. So if it's Saturday, I could do it Saturday. If you brought them over there on Saturday or if I pick them up, I can pick them up from your house.
That, and I can give you the, the drawing plan. The, the reason I say the drawing plan, because we're trying to have some continuity between all the planters. So once they're all planted, they'll sort of have this same feeling to them, you know, with, uh, I mean, Eva can tell you that it, it, you know, do you want to tell them a little bit about what we did today, Eva?
Oh, sure. Um, we have, um, we cleared them all out, the, the pots. And then, um, we split the, um, because Sharon has them. What are, what's the size of those? They're like the saucer kind of planters?
They're a 12 inch bowl.
Yep. So we, what we did was, um, we either, we cut them in half. And we separated them and we kind of put one on, on either side, either, and then down the middle, we did the parsley because the parsley is gonna get, fill in and get much bigger. So that was, and then Sharon came in and filled them in with the, either the willow or the other branches. So that was, so we had, on one side, we, we used one, we took one round, cut it in half and used those pansies. And on the other side, the senior center side, we actually did two, two, three one halves of the rounds. So they were a little bit bigger. And then just down the center, we had the, um, the parsley, three parsnies. You're on mute, Sharon.
I think she's talking to David.
Could you take a picture of it so that?
Sharon took pictures today.
Okay.
A plan of. What's she doing?
I live in a two zoom household. I was asked to move. So I had to move to another room. That's what, you saw me moving. So I'm sorry. Yes, I can show you pictures. It's really quite simple. So, um, we can do that. Um, it's, and, and basically we clean out the pots. Um, I believe, I'm pretty sure, Daria, that the pots at the library have been planted with tulips. So you'll have to be really careful that when you clean them, you don't disturb the tulips coming up. Hmm, okay. Okay.
At the Prosser one, there's the, the planters in the back entrance and then the ones facing tungses.
There's one in the front, one large one in the front and two in the back. And actually, I, I have to, even though you volunteered, I just remembered. So Tatiana usually handles the library and she works, that's meetings. But I do want to run it by her to make sure that she's okay, that we have somebody else doing that.
Because while I'm there, I, there's the three dogwoods and I didn't prune one of them. So I still have to. And then right where you return your like old books, that crab apple, I noticed that there's, um, one piece that is really dead. And I'm trying to do something with that.
Okay, that would be good.
There, I'll, I'll do some pruning.
Okay, uh, on Saturday. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. And maybe I can tell Tatiana, maybe she'll want to come on and she can do the plants and you can do the pruning.
Or, or whatever. I mean, planting, uh, some, uh, containers wouldn't take me any time at all.
Yeah, the, the thing I'm nervous about is I, remember I planted bulbs in these things and I'm pretty sure I put a lot. So maybe on these, now that I'm thinking about it, we may want to wait to see because if we break the tips, if we start scraping, just wondering if we shouldn't.
Well, they may be up by now.
Well, a lot are up.
Okay.
I could definitely plant in between bulbs. That's.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Um.
Just as an FII, I was at Walmart and they had all of their tiny little plant, their, their plantings and they had hyacinths, they had irises, they had daffodils, they had muscaray, all kinds of stuff. It was only a dollar.
Wow.
Which Walmart?
Were they, were they hardened off?
Yes, they were all coming up. They were beautiful.
No, were they hardened off? Not when they were coming up, were they hardened off?
Well, no, but some of the, uh, daffodils were already up, but a, a lot of them were already just, you know, they were ready to go. And it was only a dollar and it was at the one.
Yeah, they're outside. So they're probably hardened off.
No, it was inside.
Yeah. So they're not hardened off.
Well, um, I would say it was like an outdoor, like greenhouse. So, no, they were, they were ready to go. I mean, they wouldn't have, no, they're not gonna get nipped. They were, no, they were fine. But it was only a dollar.
Wow.
Wow. The one in Avon?
No, it was the one in Southington.
Oh.
But I, I can't imagine, I, I haven't been in the one in Avon yet, but, I mean, I could, I don't know why they would only give it to the one in Southington, but they were only a dollar.
Yeah.
How many plants in a pot? It was, it was like a big, it was like a four, it was like this big. It was, it was size. It wasn't tiny. It wasn't like little cells or anything. It was, it was this big. And they had a big variety. And they had like irises, little purple irises. A dollar. How much were they, Daria? A dollar?
A dollar.
Dollar.
A dollar.
A dollar. Okay. That's good to know. Well, you know, sometimes those make great little flower things. Somebody, I saw them in, uh, the grocery store, they were selling those little tete-a-tete yellow ones for like $3.99, $4.99. So that, that is.
Trader Joe's had some beautiful cattle lilies for $9. Beautiful.
Cattle lilies?
Yeah.
Dollars. I've been buying a lot of houseplants at Trader Joe's lately. They've had a lot of different things.
Okay. So you guys are all hardened up. So I'm gonna move you along. So, okay, so we've gotten, um, we're all set with our plantings and the Philly Park is taken care of. And, um, I, I just want to remind you that, you know, early April, it's warm now, but I highly recommend that you don't start raking in everything until the temperatures at night get a little warmer, like, you know, 50 degrees because there are all these wonderful little critters that have been staying there all winter in their little bungalows. And it makes, you know, we need them to come out and help us in the, uh, in the spring and in the summer. So, uh, it's, I would, you know, I've been doing things like you can go out and cut and just leave your grass and stuff there for now and then rake it up later on. And it, once the insects have an opportunity to hatch and move on. Um, just a recommendation. And I mean, everybody, you must be seeing wonderful plants outside because I mean, they're everywhere. It's just so beautiful. Um, so the trees for Bloomfield, I wanted to update you on our special fund. So today, we got another check in today. So we have $2,400 in our special fund. And we have, the BBC is giving $800 and the C E E C is donating $800 each of us from our budgets to help pay for the plantings of the trees.
And I submitted the check from, uh, check request from Dunkster this morning.
Yay. Oh, great. That's wonderful.
$500 from Dunkster.
Thank you. Thank you. This is wonderful. So we're very happy.
Five hundred.
Okay. Wow.
Okay. This is just so, it's so, uh, feels so good to see everybody participating, um, coming up. And I hope that you all will attend. Uh, the value of trees is tomorrow night at the library. You still can sign up. I put the link on your, um, your agenda that you can click on and sign up at the library. Or if you don't have your agenda, you can go to uh, the Bloomfield Library and look under events and it's, you can go down to the calendar and you'll see our event tomorrow night at 6:30 and you click on it and you can register there also. At this point, we have 44 people signed up. Uh, that was this morning. I don't know now. But they're very happy about that. And John Keigho is going to be doing, uh, the pruning workshop, which is coming up. Uh, let's see, when is pruning workshop? The pruning workshop is May 21st. So we can talk about that in April, but that's not gonna be, that's gonna be a workshop that will take a limited amount of people. So between 15, he wants 15, but if more people sign up, we will come in, some of us, uh, like, you know, Daria, hopefully, and myself and others who are, uh, you know, have a pruning background so that we can help the others who come. Because this is all about pruning big things. This is about pruning tree branches on trees and how to use your loppers. And, and this is something when you have a backyard and you want to know what you do with your trees, when do you cut them? How do you cut, make the cuts? And, and things like that. So I think it's gonna be a good workshop. So letting you. So, letting you know about that, and then April twenty-fourth is the Hawk Hill Guided Walk. And that's pretty much sold out almost, I uh as of this weekend, we had thirty-nine people registered. And so that's got three guides to it and we're gonna use, um Lucy has something so that we can use like. Are they microphones, Lucy, or are they headsets, I'm not quite sure, you're on mute, I can't hear.
You clip the the speaker onto your belt, so, you know, or your pant pocket or something like that. So you could even have it behind you, if people are following you, you can move it around and. So you have a microphone that comes down around your ear to your mouth, so.
And how many do you have?
I have two.
Two, okay. Alright. Alright, um, so so that's coming up and the Arbor Day is April, is um, that's April twenty-fourth. So that's our Earth Day weekend, that's the same weekend, I don't know if any of you buy plants from the northeast uh Conservation District. But they're having their plant sale at the Hawk Hill Barn that Saturday and Friday of that same weekend. And I believe their deadline is coming up to order your plants. So I I, last year, we bought some swamp azaleas, I think they were swamp azaleas, based on Daria's recommendation. And we put them at the town hall and so there there should be nice coming up this year in Blooming. And the Arbor Day tree planting, I told you a little bit about that. We're, I'm looking for more volunteers and I wanna talk to you about a tree force. So I'd like to get the neighborhood involved, the people who live on Rockwell Avenue. To see if they would be interested in being the stewards of these trees. And um I was thinking, and I kinda was hoping you might have, give me some input or see what you think. One, we do have a person who won a NATO uh notable landscape award there and I could go and talk to her. But I was wondering if it made any sense for us to do a little flyer and distribute it to everyone on that street, you know? Asking them if they'd be interested in, or or join us, you know, join us and be part of this. And if you'd like to volunteer, you know, here's a place where, right now, if people wanna volunteer for this, they have to write to treesforbloomfield@gmail.com. And that's where we can take their names, I'm trying to work it so that eventually every activity we have has a link. So that they can go online and sign up and we have records and and we can, you know, and handle everybody and know they're coming. So, um. So if anybody, you know, if they're interested in coming and wanna help, please sign up so that we have an idea. And if you come, you know, oh, it it isn't that everybody has to dig, because I think, because the BBC is handling this. We, I would like to have some of us being the organizers, you know, making sure you get everybody's name, making sure the tools are kept neat, they're all lined up. Um, whatever we have to do and we'll talk about it, do we, you know, because in the old days, we would have provided donuts or something. Because I'm having the plants delivered at seven AM in the morning, the trees, so it, but now, I don't think you do any of those things. And we are asking people to wear masks and we are, you know, trying to still practice um safe procedures. So, but we can think about, do we wanna provide water or something, I I I don't know, I would like you to be thinking about it. And or if you have some input today, um, one, do we need to do any of that? Two, do you have any ideas how we can get the neighborhood involved? That, that's my two questions I'm gonna throw out to you right now.
The neighborhood is surrounding streets, Jim?
What do you think, Gwen?
I'm, yeah, I'm thinking that whole area, like, there's a small circle kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, I I think it's a good idea for the flyers and not, you know, no, um, you know, pressure, just. Show people that, or or tell people what's gonna happen and people just wanna go out and watch, not that they have to, just watch.
So, but there is, um, for for publicity, we are trying to line up a Channel Three to come in and. Do a video, you know, come in and highlight it. And um trying to, you know, get neighborhood involvement on this and I totally agree with you that. It's a wonderful thing, the trees are are really beautiful trees, they're native trees, we're putting in a charter oak. Which is the state tree and uh we're putting in maple trees and a um. Hackberry and what's the other one, um, Daria? Yeah, hoppy, right, yeah.
So I have a question, please, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, are there houses directly in front? In back of the trees and would people have hoses where they could water the trees? It's not a, it's more like a park area or an open space or?
So where the trees are going is, you you have, if you were at the beginning of Rockwell facing east. You start at the, you start at the fire station, the Blue Hills Fire Station. And behind that is an open space where they're going to hold the summer concerts this year. And uh further down from that is a parking lot and then there's the pickleball courts. So five of the trees are going in front of the pickleball courts. And then across the street is the Belk.
Early Learning Center.
Yeah, the Bloomfield Early Learning Center and there are trees and just right beyond that was a, was a um. Is a uh basketball court and stuff and a parking lot. And then to, from there to the end of the, to the end of that corner is Bill Lee Fields. It's a uh, right now, it's a baseball field, correct? And so the trees.
Come from?
What?
The water supply to water them before?
So um, the town has volunteered a water truck and we're going to put water bags on all the trees and. Going to fill the trees, that's why I'm looking for the stewards to say, can you come by and look at these trees, do they need water? Could you bring a watering can if possible, or would we talk to the fire department, would they help us out? We need to connect with the neighborhood to see how we can get them involved.
I, I guess my question, excuse me, is um. It doesn't sound like there are people around there.
Okay, it's all houses.
Oh, okay.
Right down sort of at the end and then at the the basketball courts and the around there are very well used. Um, you know, it it would, it's very infrequent that you wouldn't find people, they, I don't know that they would obviously be the people that would be watering or caring for the plants. But there are people there and the pickleball courts are a a draw now, I mean, when I was there, every court was filled.
Yes, they're always filled, a lot of people come from out of town to use those pickleball courts, I think.
And they also come because they're awesome. Also, what I just learned, being a new thing, is that those basketball uh courts are used, are nationally known. And many famous basketball players still come to play on them, so.
Across the street at uh on the, yeah.
They're nationally known.
And they just repaved them last year.
Right, so, you know, so there is traffic, um certainly, but I would think, you know, the other thing was. I think Sharon, you and I had talked about maybe a button or a T-shirt for the force. You know, if we could, you know, you know, if you decide that you're gonna be a force, could you, they have wear a button or something, you know, especially with the kids. Early education, you know, maybe we could get them involved too in the planting of the trees and there, they would really be the closest to that. And if their kids were involved and the families of the kids were involved, maybe they'd have some more eyes on on that area.
Yes, we had talked about that, if there was some how, and I've gotta see if Dave Hager can make that connection to invite the kids to come over. Even if they didn't plant or they threw a handful of dirt into the hole, so they felt like they were part of it and that's a great idea. I I was in the process of trying to design a button that said Trees for Bloomfield. Um, and they're not that expensive that we could do a separate one that just said Tree Force, you know?
Stickers, give somebody, I helped plant a tree today. Trees for Bloomfield, kids love those kinds of things, you know, they can put them on their water bottle, they can put them on their sweater, they can put them on their backpack. Just, you know, I planted a tree today, trees for Bloomfield.
That's a great idea. Okay.
Sharon, there's, you you have Thursday, April thirtieth, but it's Friday is April thirtieth, so is it on Thursday or is it on Friday?
Oh, did I put Thursday? Um, no, it's Friday, whatever Arbor Day is, it's Friday. I might, I had, I didn't bring down my newspaper where it said the date, I hope I put Friday. I know it's April thirtieth, I've been saying April thirtieth, so, okay, yes. Um, and then the last event that I want, I mentioned the May twenty-first, so that was ten to twelve. So that's the only events I'm going to talk about now, the rest of the events come in June, we have plenty of time to talk to them. In April, we'll talk about um, you know, planting our plantings for Memorial Day weekend. And getting that all out of the way. Let me see, is there anything else, oh, I do have a couple of other things that need to be planted. I planted tulips in front of the sign when you come into town hall, right as you come in, there's the sign that says Town Hall. I think that's what it says, so there's a space on the backside for three ITA plants that have to go in. So that's a planting that needs to be done and we will have this year in the spring, like we did last year. There's a bunch of plants I bought in the fall that we will need to go find places and plant them. And Eva brought up the point that the sign, electronic sign, that's across from Carmen. Uh, excuse me, not Carmen, it's across from the three thirty park. We dug up hostas and planted there last year, but we found it was very hot and we didn't get a lot of water to them. Now, maybe they'll be different this year, there are bulbs in there and the daffodils will bloom first, they don't, I don't worry about them about watering. But, you know, what do we wanna see there after that? The suggestion was to put in um like a sedum, Sedum Autumn Joy or something that basically can take care of itself.
Right.
And you wouldn't have to do a lot of maintenance and it will go all the way through to the fall. So if you like that concept, I can order some of those. It is part shade there, but I think the sedums can take that, that.
Maybe a variety or we just do all one?
Well, my feeling is when you're doing a public planting and that's something, it's a ride-by planting as a mass. It will show up and be stronger than if it's just spots of color. If you're in a garden where you're walking past it, then you can do mix.
How many Sedum Autumn Joys do you need, Sharon?
I don't know, you know, I have to go measure the square footage there, I haven't really looked.
Cause I think I have a few I can dig up.
Alright, well, let's, let's see, let me see, I'll have to, you know, go through, you have Sedum Autumn Joy, that's the one you have, okay.
I have Sedum Autumn Joy and I think my neighbor does too.
Okay, and one other thing is the Mary Hill Park. So last year, we, in the spring, planted the yellow daffodils. I have another group to plant this year again, but they're not even showing their little noses yet. So, but when they come, I'll let you know and we said, did you plant, you planted those last year?
Yeah, I think we planted, we planted, um.
You were there, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Henriette, do you have a question? You planted?
No, I was good.
I can't hear you, Henriette, you're breaking up.
Frozen.
She's frozen, yeah.
That's so weird, okay. Wait, who's speaking out, Daria, did you have a question? No, okay. Henriette, we can't hear you because you're frozen. Okay, well, maybe she'll come back. Um, alright, so that brings us to the end of our meeting, is there any other uh topics that you wish to bring up? Oh, I did wanna remind you that on the last Monday in uh March. Um, Doug Ptolemy is speaking at the Granby Library. Uh, I would hope that you could all sign up and hear that webinar.
What is the webinar on, uh?
It's called Our Last Hope, I believe. Doug Ptolemy is someone who truly believes that we need to keep native plants in the landscape. He's, he's like uh the Rachel Carson of today, very well-known, very well-read. I was giving his books out to my employees in two thousand eight, when they came to work for me, they had to read his book. So I have some of his books, if you'd like to read one, he's really very remarkable. He's um something, a lot of people have been inspired by him, so I highly recommend it. And and I can give you some webinars online that you can listen to yourself, I see that they're being shown now that you don't even have to go to the webinar. But it's free and it's at the Granby Library, you just have to register. Okay, do, if we're all done, um, if there's no more questions or anything, do I hear a motion to end the meeting?
Motion.
That's a motion recently. Thank you all, thank you all for this and thank you for those who volunteered to plant. And I will see you all and good luck on your new uh grand.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Exciting.
Very exciting.
Very exciting, alright, we'll see you guys uh on the road.
Thursday, okay, bye-bye, thank you.